May we pray, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon this community and upon this city. Father, we ask that you be with us in our deliberations this evening. Father, we also lift up anyone in our community who is, who may be ill, who may be having heavy burden, and Father, we ask you to bless them, guide them, and take care of them. Father, we, uh, we ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. We do not have any public comment this evening. Moving on to the informal reports from standing committees and staff, is there a motion to approve as published?
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Moved by Howard, seconded by David. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those referred. Uh, next is a consent calendar, which this month is just a common council meeting from January 11th and 24th. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by David, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is... All right, moving into our first action item of the evening is a, uh, another change of agent for Sage Dining Services. This is for their, uh, liquor license. Um, the new agent would be Dustin Tesmer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Al, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion?
I'll just add that this is the new general manager of Sage Dining Services.
Thank you, Jolene. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, moving into our big topic of the evening is the notice of bid award for the Grace and Lloyd Mitchell Senior Activity Center and Trailhead Project. Uh, Adam, do you want to start with a brief overview of the bid?
Yes.
I will turn over to you. One second.
In your packets, you would have received, uh, a couple documents, uh, for review, uh, ahead of the decision for tonight. Um, so, we have come to the point with the Senior Activity Center and Trailhead that we have, uh, bid out the project at the deadline, um, February 1st. There was one bid received from Harmony Construction Management. Um, MSA has put together a letter stating, um, that Harmony Construction Management is a qualified bidder. Their total bid, base bid for the project, so that is just to build. The, um, senior center facility is $1,988,313. There's an alternate bid as well for $238,251, and that is, um, that is for trail work. Harmony has, um, said they will hold that, that second bid, uh, for a couple weeks here, um, and we'll discuss that as to, um, why we asked them to do that. You can see here, here is the actual bid that was put forward for the project, then a notice of award, which states, um, the base price and holding the alternative bid or alternate bid till March 1st. So, as we process through this, there's a couple questions that I think need to be answered that you probably have. One is, uh, there was one bidder for, for the project, and why was that? Okay? Generally speaking, we would like to see at least two for a project of this scope. Um, we publicized the, uh, bid in accordance with state statutes. We published it in papers, we put it online, put it on Quest. It was accessible, um, very easily to contractors. There were a number of contractors, general contractors, that did take out plans and have interest in the project, but ultimately, you know, did not show the interest of bidding the project. Harmony Construction Management out of Madison, which is considered to be a responsible bidder, was the only one to put in a bid. In engaging the other contractors and looking at everything, there was, um, pretty clear indication as to why there weren't other bids. Some of those reasons included the fact that this is a CDBG project and requires Davis Bake and prevailing wage rates. That's not necessarily an excuse, that is just when it comes to contractors, an obstacle or, um, a tracking or just paperwork and, and, and time and effort that quite frankly makes their lives more difficult sometimes. Um, so because federal requirements and there are federal CDBG dollars here, there are things that complicate this project. Um, we heard that there was a lack of subcontractor bids from local contractors, okay? So, when you have a general contractor looking to do a project of this scope and they need plumbers or electricians or anything like that, they often look toward the local providers to, um, to, to offer that service. There appeared to be a lack of that, um, and then obviously there's a lot of volatility in the current market, uh, with, with lumber costs, with material costs, and, uh, the word out in municipal building right now and bidding is that contractors are hesitant to take on municipal projects because of the uncertainty with, uh, workforce, the uncertainty with supply chain, and the uncertainty if they can actually complete the project in a timely fashion without getting penalized by the federal requirements or the city requirements imposed on the project. Okay? So, we were a little disappointed that there was not more than one bid. As a part of CDBG, we are required to petition or move, uh, you know, submit a reason to the Department of Administration as to why, you know, it is in the best interest of the city at this time to accept the sole bid. They would generally require two bids, but because we didn't receive that, they require us, they allow us to move forward with their approval, but we have to state why it is in the best interest. And we have submitted this letter to keep this moving forward because frankly, Harmony Construction Management and the timeline they have with material prices and locking in their price is a pretty short window right now. So, we have submitted this, and the reasons, you know, we feel, um, just talking to just administration and, and the mayor signed the letter to the DOA is because, you know, rebidding this project would not necessarily render a better result because of the, the reasons I just gave, as well as we are on a timeline and rebidding this would not only cost us more money, around five to seven thousand dollars just to rebid it, but we are under the CDBG closed requirement to get this project done by October 31st of 2020. So, uh, we would anticipate rebidding this taking at least another month, month and a half. Okay? So, um, we are within our, our rights to accept the sole bid. Uh, any motion tonight, just a note, needs to be contingent on CDBG or DOA's review and approval of the sole bidder request. Okay? Just keep that in the back of your mind. So, we got one bid, um, how did that bid shake out and how do we ultimately, um, pay for this or afford this project? Because it did come in, um, what I would consider substantially over. Um, and the majority of that was in the building. We're looking at about a 20% plus or minus. So, the base bid, um, with the contingency is the 1,988. We have to also then, as you go down the spreadsheet here, you have to add in fixtures, furnitures, technology. So, we're looking at chairs, tables, desks, you know, the potential of a hearing loop, um, anything and everything, um, appliances, um, we're looking at soft costs, so these are costs that we generally already have into the project. So, there's $235,000 in engineering, architecture, and administration. So, the total billed is 2.298313. Yeah. Uh, we have funding in the bank of $600,000. That's the Mitchell donation with the $100,000 anonymous donation. There's the CDBG grant for $552,000. And in this proposal, um, as we sit here tonight, um, it is my recommendation that to fund this, we use every cent of our ARPA dollars to, um, complete this project. So, that is $820,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds, um, toward this project. So, we have about $1.973 million in total funding with $325,000 yet to be funded. The city had allocated in the 2022 budget, $350,000 in our capital plan for this project. So, we have that amount covered in either debt or, uh, just our capital cash, um, so we will have to work those details out, but it was included in that, um, budget. So, um, beyond that, the estimate for the project, you can see, um, was around 2.25, um, with all the alternatives, alternate bids, um, and it came in at around two, just over 2.5. So, um, uh, it's pretty, you know, big jump. We are, um, also, you know, if you look at the alternative, alternate bids here, you can see there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, um, and then there is a map here as well that show you what those bids are. So, bid alternate 1 is the red, 2 is the blue, uh, up here, and 2 the ball diamonds, and then 3 is the green, and then there's like a, a fix-it station and, uh, some of the bid alternates are also paving. So, um, it is our recommendation to wait on, on that portion of this project at this point. Um, you can see here too, that the breakdown of that, there is $100,000 that we do have in county aid for the trail. So, at the very least, you know, worst case scenario in this, in this position we are in, if we want to do this project and the trails, we can do bid alternate 2 and 4 totaling $105,000 with $100,000 of county aid, and we would get a trail from the Mass Scootin, um, at Eureka over down to the park into the senior center Trailhead, and we would also get the northern cross here in the blue and the southern section connection to the, um, to the actual, uh, ball diamonds. Um, so we could, and, you know, under the current, under the current funding, we can get, you know, I would say 80% of things done. Okay? What we are waiting for on the 28th and the reason, you know, my recommendation and talking to MSA and everybody is because we have a neighborhood investment fund, um, grant out there. This, you do not have in your packet, I put it in today, you can just kind of follow it, it's very similar, but we have applied for about $1.2 million. It's ARPA funds from the state, they will be announced the week of February 21st. That would put us in a position where through this, you can see, we could do everything we want to do, we would kick in, um, some money in terms of our, our own ARPA dollars and still have $500,000 left to do, uh, to use with ARPA. Um, so that's of the 820. Um, this is sort of the dream situation, best case scenario that we get this, but right now, uh, we don't have that money in the bank and there's no indication whether, you know, we will have a positive result on that grant. I'm very hopeful, I think it's a good project for that program when it came out. Um, but basically you add 1.2 million in where ARPA was before, you add everything else out, you'd have to come up with $84,000 to do the remaining balance of the project, and then you have, um, you'd have about $270,000 or so, uh, of our own ARPA dollars going, or 300 some, I can't remember what I did, sorry. Um, but that's for courts and ball diamonds, so that's to kind of fulfill the entire vision of the project, leaving 500 available. Um, but we are, at this point, recommending, um, we stick to just the base bid. Um, Harmony Construction Management, like I said, is a qualified bidder. They have, um, held their pricing for the time being, but I don't think that pricing will be ho- held, um, beyond a week or so from today, um, because of price, uh, fluctuations. So, um, if we want to move this forward, there is a notice of bid, um, in your packets and we can happily answer any questions. It's a lot, sorry.
Questions?
I noticed on, um, the estimated project cost sheet, I don't know if it has a number or not, but in the notes on number 2, it says costs are ballpark and preliminary and thus require more design development to confirm. I thought this was set for bid and when a bid comes in, it should be, you know, kept.
The cost estimate that you were referring to is put together by MSA, that's what they anticipated the cost would be? Okay? They send it out to bid and the contractor ultimately says this is what they're willing to do the job for.
So, yes, so MSA put, with their bid here, they, they basically put together a best guess estimate. This is by no means, y- you know, somebody has to follow, it's, it's just a, a guess of what the bid is going to come back at for the project.
But we got the bid from Harmony, correct?
Yes. This bid was, this estimate was done before, this bid was, this estimate was done before.
Is, if we approve it, it's locked in?
Yes. Yes, yes. The, 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 the base bid of 1,9881313 would be locked in.
Locked in, okay.
Yes.
Basically it was in there for the history of it, but it really was projected the cost and then what the bid really came back in. Does that have nothing to do with the bid itself, it's just history of the project?
Yes.
Clearly a timing issue as well.
But yeah, I think the date on MSA's was January 4th. So, going in January 4th, when we released the bids, that was their best guess estimate of what it would cost. I think in that time between January 4th and February 1st, quite frankly, um, lumber went to the highest it's ever been, and this is a lumber building. That's why the price is locked in for a period of time here, um, so.
Howard?
Um, yeah, materials are the big thing. Uh, I'm working on another major project west of the city here and, um, our Phase 2 increased 17% since last, uh, September when, um, we had put it out for bids and that, so, you know, it's really just understandable, it's the, the nature of the times, and, uh, we have to either accept them or abandon the project, and I'd rather move ahead.
Regarding the neighborhood investment fund, 1.2, matching funds, 50% to 60% match, pure dollar for dollar, what did we actually apply for, for that grant?
So, that was 1.2 million dollars with, um, I believe about 1.1 in the bank. So, we matched that with our donation and the CDBG as an old, because then that would have put us at around the 225 or 2.25, 2.5, um, total. So, um, there's no match required with those funds. Um, that's why I believe ours is more compelling than somebody else's that is asking for 90 or 100%.
Yes, could be.
We have 50% in the bank and, and, um, and that's, like I said, best case scenario.
Like some other grants, could they come back and say, we're not giving you 1.2, but we're giving you 500, or is it 1.2 or nothing?
It's really hard to say because this is the first grant in history that has had, that I've ever dealt with, that is so open-ended and was literally a, a, a five or six-page grant for 1.2 million dollars. Uh, it, it, you know, no, I mean, it was very simple and that decision was meant to be for December or January, but, you know, the only, the thing is, is because it was that simple, there were a lot of applications. So, could they come back and say, we'll give you less? They could, but my, my guess is they are going to honor the requests to get the work done in full because that is the intention of the ARPA funds and the intention of that program is to complete projects within the state that have, you know, uh, an impact within communities. So, I don't think they will come back and say, here's, you know, 1 point, here's 1 million bucks instead of 1.2. I think they will fulfill the request. They just came out with, for example, a similar program that we applied for, we didn't get funded, but it was more tourism-related, and they originally had 15 million available, they increased that to over 20 million, uh, and gave most of it to Milwaukee Dane in Green Bay and Door County in Wisconsin Dells, but, um, but they funded it more. So, so I think the state at this time where they say there's 200 million available, they will honor, uh, the requests of the grants because frankly, they have money to currently hand out from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act.
And we won't know that until the 21st is when they will publicize it? Or is that the deadline?
The week of the 21st. We applied in, uh, November, December, and have been waiting and they have pushed it back, but the 21st, I am confident they will get it out by the 21st. So, by the 28th, we will know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
How long do you anticipate, um, DOA and CDBG, um, is going to take to approve the one bid request? Adam?
Uh, that is going to be up to our city attorney. The only piece we are waiting for, sorry, Lud, no, the only piece we are waiting to get to them, we have the letter, we have other documentation that we are supposed to provide, we have talked to Joanna Storm at the DOA, our, our agent, she's only waiting for a legal opinion that states that we can accept a sole bidder because of the situation. We've done everything right and, and we just got one bid. So, if Lud sends an email to me tomorrow and I forward that to the DOA, my anticipation is that the DOA will, um, have an answer to us easily by the end of the week or ASAP because they understand the situation we are in. They also do say it may take up to 30 days, but I do not think they will, um, it's just my gut on it, just going back and forth with emails today, I do not think that this will be bleeding into next week at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jolene?
I'm grateful, Adam, that you shared about the current situation as to why, uh, some of the reasons why we only have one, one bid. I too had that concern and I reached out to, uh, one of our local construction companies, uh, who might, uh, have been able to do this project, Polash Construction, and they confirmed exactly what you said, uh, Adam, as well as they are currently bidding out for a year and a half to two years. And so, they didn't, um, think that we were, we were able to wait, uh, for that law to do this project. And, um, I also, I did, uh, search Harmony Construction Management reviews, and I will state that there was a concerning review, that it looked to be online, that had to deal with, uh, personnel. So, I did call and, uh, talk to someone in management who picked up the phone, uh, and, um, again, it was hard to tell online if it indeed was from the company, and I feel satisfied, um, that this was, uh, comment was within the last five years, and he said that they have not, uh, re- they have retained all personnel in the past five years. They have not lost anyone, everyone has stayed with them for the past five years. So, um, they seem to, their employees seem to be happy, and while it's not more local, I do like that it is Wisconsin. Um, so again, I guess I just want to state that if anyone does look online, I feel satisfied that that comment was indeed not, not backed up or not credible.
And, and I will just share with you that Harmony Construction Management, they do have to go through a vetting process too of not being disbarred by the federal government to receive this fund, so they do have, there are certain requirements that they have to meet before getting a contract to ensure that they're not some, you know, fraudulent firm. In addition to that, um, just MSA has worked with them on a series of projects over the past couple of years. Um, this is sort of the project that is in their wheelhouse and they're comfortable, MSA isn't comfortable in saying they can complete this type of work. Uh, I think another reason that we didn't get as many bids is the, the level of this project. This is a 1.5 to 2.5, you know, million-dollar project. It's not, you know, the, the big firms, it's not big enough for the big firms and it's too big for the small firms, and Harmony has found kind of this, this middle ground where they're doing a lot of municipal work in parks, they're putting in splash pads and, and have done successful projects in the Madison area with splash pads, park shelters, park pavilions, so this is right up their alley.
I'm glad you added that, and in fact, right away, I said, what other cities in Wisconsin have you worked with? And what, and I didn't write them all down, but Portage, Village of Dane, City of Adam, Sauk City, Middleton, right away, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Adam, I talked about this, I guess, for the public at large, obviously if we decided not to do this project, we would be inherently almost 800,000 of potential aid towards a project that we wouldn't have in the future.
If, if we were to go right now and, and say, done.
Correct.
The $552,000 CDBG grant would be lost.
Correct.
That, that is straight city funds, that was refunded by the city to reapply for from the closed-out revolving loan fund, if you all recall. In addition to that, we do, we did take $100,000 directly related to building a senior center. Uh, I don't know who that was, it's anonymous, so, but we would have to sort of figure that out. Um, and then we have approximately $200,000 that we have spent in design engineering, um, that, that would be gone. So, yes, you are looking at, you know, by the time it's all said and done, you're looking at likely near a million dollars, I would guess, maybe a little less than that, um, that we would be.
And the Lloyd Mitchell gift of the 500, so really...
Still have to figure out, still have to figure out what to do with that.
So, the increase in total, and it's frustrating, I hope the public at large realizes, myself frustrated with the cost, obviously, and I know Howard, you've been dealing with it, I talked to you about it too, and it's frustrating because of the cost of things now and when we're doing it, but we do have invested interest in this. We did want to see it for, foresee, I'm not happy about all 800,000 of the ARPA funds going away because of a lot of the other projects that could have been done, but we do have other hopeful avenues to fund some of those type of projects as well, correct?
Yeah, so, this, if there's a time where the federal government is, is, is having, creating programs to, to aid municipalities, it is now. Um, we, you know, like, for example, ARPA, one of the big things was getting lead copper out of, out of, you know, lead service lines. We have applied for $150,000 in safe drinking water. Um, Mike and I have been going back and forth and have been talking a lot, they're, they're coming up with the bipartisan infrastructure legislation, which they're accepting applications in the next couple weeks and months, um, for road proj- projects and bridge projects. Um, we, uh, that is all very new, but I was on a call with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities today, and I think the state of Wisconsin has to spend 1.2 billion dollars on roads this year from federal government. Okay? So, so, not saying that we're going to be able to get every road done by any means, but we are prioritizing this and there are other means to fund things. There are certainly other things that will, you know, fall off the, you know, the, the priority list from the 820,000. Other things in the list that we had from ARPA have been budgeted for and we've moved forward with other resources. So, um, y- you know, this, this project frankly fits within the guidelines of ARPA very well. Um, and, and frankly, I, if, if that check hadn't come to the city, we would have a very different conversation tonight, I think. So, um, so we're thankful that they passed the American Rescue Plan Act.
And part of our original conversation with the ARPA funds when it first came out was hopefully for sustained, long-term use of the funds, not just a new computer that's going to be obsolete in two years and things like that. The idea was hopefully we could use those funds, I think Alderman Schrader brought it up at previous meeting, to hopefully have those funds work in perpetuity, if not a long time for us. Um, a building like this would serve the community indefinitely for a period that hopefully those ARPA funds could use that for versus laptops or upgrade the home system or whatever.
This computer will not leave as nice of a legacy as that senior center.
So, the public at large thinking we're not doing a lot of the projects done, but the scope of this one project hopefully will outweigh the small ARPA's that we could potentially lose off the wish list, if you will.
And just a reminder to everyone here and at home that this project benefits not only the seniors, but also the community at large because it is also a community center. The Trailhead facility will bring in people from out of town to visit our town. This is definitely a worthy project and worth the investment, no matter where we have to invest that money from.
Do you have another question? Are we actually approving the exact... Another question, are we actually approving the exact expenditure or just the fact that we're just approving the bid if we do that tonight?
We would be, we would be.
Because of your neighborhood grant that's out there.
We would be needing to approve the notice of award.
Good.
For the base bid contingent on CDBG and DOA's review and approval of the sole bidder request. So we're just awarding the bid.
The base bid.
The base bid, yeah. Yep.
1 million 988.
I mean, one, uh, understood.
I like Lud's number.
I like mine ever better.
Because the funding could come multiple ways now still in the next two weeks.
You are correct. Yes.
Hopefully.
Yes. So, you know, we, we, we've come up with a funding mechanism to get a lot of this done, even with the higher than anticipated cost. So, um, you know, that's, if we get the other grant, we will have that conversation on the 28th, but it doesn't, it doesn't really, we can do it without that, generally speaking.
Or comments? Or motions?
Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we accept the bid of 1,988,313 from Harmony Construction Management Incorporated of Madison, Wisconsin, pending approval of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Wisconsin Department of Administration on the sole bidder request.
I would second that. Moved by Al, seconded by Howard. Thank you.
Only clarification would be single versus sole, just single bidder. Same intent.
Yeah.
Same intent. That language change, all right with you, Al?
That's, yes. I can't see that far. Looks like sold to me from here.
They said, it's fine, you can use either. I think they mean the same thing.
I don't have my glasses on.
One versus two versus.
Any discussion or questions or comments on that motion?
I guess perhaps now is a nice time to say, if there's anyone listening and they would like to make a donation to this project, we are still accepting them. We welcome it.
Thank you for that.
John? I know that the bid came in higher, but I don't remember what the projected cost was last fall when we were talking rough numbers.
It, it was likely around that, you know, just the building was always around 1.6.
Okay.
1.5 change.
Yeah, one, yeah.
1.67.
Yeah, it was around there, all, you know, that's kind of the parameter of where we were. Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Always kind of had that number because with the 1.3 coming in, that was even for CDBG, where we would have to come up with about 3,000 or something. The 300's always been in our realm, if you will.
Any further discussion? One last time, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the, uh, our?
Let's take a roll call.
Yeah. Very good, we'll do a roll call. Vote for, uh, the notice of award to Harmony Construction.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Schotzinger.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Gallups.
Aye.
Mrs. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Wurch.
Aye.
Mr. Split.
Aye.
Passes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you all.
Very good, thank you.
Moving back on the 28th. One way or the other.
Yeah, so clarification that any other change orders have to come back to the council. So you haven't authorized anything other than just building the building.
Yep.
All right, moving on to project updates and staff reports. Um, Adam, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, one second.
I can come back here.
Sorry. Where did it go? Um, so we are currently conducting interviews for the city clerk position. Um, we'll have hopefully a candidate to bring forward to the common council in, uh, by the end of this week. Um, so we will talk a little bit about, uh, we'll reach out to you to see if we have to have a special meeting. I know that's not what we want to do, but, uh, waiting to the 28th is going to be maybe a little difficult, um, just based on timelines for, um, elections and letting people know if they have to quit their current position. So I had a little summary there. Amanda Tony did start with us last week, a week ago, um, Finance Director and Assistant City Administrator. So if you see her, there is, um, there's her contact information. So, um, she's on board and, and then Dani, uh, Daniella Partipio, who's been, uh, working interim with us, um, will be around for about another week, week and a half and is then going to hand off everything, um, kind of making sure that the year end is closed out. So, um, so we're in a good spot for the audit that is coming up in March. Uh, we have RFPs out and we should have some committee meetings scheduled toward the end of this month to discuss those things, um, for facilities and parks. That's it.
Thank you. Anything from other departments? Nope. All right, um, I've got nothing special tonight, but be careful. A lot of people are ill around the city. Be cautious, take care of yourselves. Hopefully everyone gets through it well. Um, any comments or future agenda items from the council members?
I'll, I'll add that Walgreens right now, uh, at the pharmacy has free N95 masks. You just walk in and ask at the pharmacy. In Ripon, that is.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Paige.
Right.
Seconded by you. All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 6:38. Thank you.